Good morning, everyone. I'm Debbie Oldham and I'm clerk for the committee. And usually I'm opening this meeting as we have received apologies from the Chair this morning. Therefore, the first item of business today will be to nominate the Chair. Could I take nominations, please?
Can I nominate councillor Dawson?
Thank you councillor Taylor. Could I have a second, eh? Thank you councillor Conrad. Councillor Dawson is now formally elected as Chair. Thank you.
Yes, welcome, everyone. And councillor Franz Mier does send her apologies. This is a bit of a last-minute change, so you're going to have to bear with me. But the first thing I'd like to do is welcome everybody to the meeting. Well, I'm always impressed how many officers come to this meeting and it just actually highlights the importance of this meeting. So it's going to be livestreamed, as we all know, so that the public can observe the meeting. And I note we have got some observers. We've got a student with us who's going to observe as well. So everybody on their best behaviour, please. Before we start proceedings with the committee, I'd like to inform the committee that councillor John Gavani has chosen to stand down from this committee. And I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank councillor Gavani for his time and valuable contributions since he joined in May 2024. Now, I invite members and officers to introduce themselves. And please remember to turn off your microphone once you have introduced yourselves.
Morning, everyone. Councillor Sonny Layton, Geisli and Rawdon.
Good morning, everyone. I'm councillor Taylor and I'm subbing for councillor Bethel. I'm from Chapel Allerton.
Hi, I'm Kieran Denner, head of procurement and commercial services.
Morning, Andrew Byram, Chief Digital Information Officer.
Good morning, Tim Rowlett, Intelligence and Policy Team.
Good morning, Angela Lowcock, Head of Finance, Internal Audit.
Good morning, Julia Brannan, Internal Audit Manager.
Good morning, Ryan Glenn, Senior Audit Manager.
Morning, everyone. Chris Rollins, Head of Finance, Corporate Financial Management.
Good morning, Mary Hausnitz, also Head of Finance in Corporate Financial Management.
Morning, Nicole Walker, Head of Legal Services.
Morning, everyone. Victoria Bradshaw, Assistant Chief Exec, Finance, Traded and Resources.
Good morning, everybody. Peminder Setti, Grant Thornton, External Audit.
Sarah O'Manga, External Audit, Grant Thornton.
Good morning, everybody. Comrade Hartbrook, councillor for Rotherwell Ward.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Upchesterfield here from the Middleton Park Ward.
Catherine Andrew Carter, Carverley and Farclay Ward.
Morning, Chair. Morning, everybody. Rebecca Roberts, Legal Advisor to the Committee.
Morning, everybody. Jonathan Foster, Senior Head of Internal Audit, Corporate Governance and Insurance.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Debbie Oldham, clerk to the committee. Thank you.
And good morning, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Gott, Corporate Governance Manager.
And councillor Dawson. We're just actually asking questions at the moment because you may have noticed, not in this particular room, but the trial fire alarm that goes off every morning at this time is actually still going on. So I'm just wondering whether we shouldn't actually evacuate. Debbie?
Apparently everything is okay. It's going on further around the building, but they are trying to turn it off. It's still a test.
So there we are. Anybody watching online, we are safe in the building. So Debbie, agenda item number one.
Thank you, Chair. So under agenda item number two, there are no appeals. Under agenda item three, there's no exempt items. Agenda item four, there's no formal late items. However, there was some supplementary information in relation to the draft statement for Accounts 2024/25, which was circulated to all members. Can I just check that everybody has a copy of that? Good, thank you. So under agenda item five, do members have any declarations of interest? I'll take silence as there are none. Agenda item six, apologies have been received on behalf of councillors Bethel, Franz Mier and Robinson. Councillor Taylor is attending today as substitute for councillor Bethel. And we have councillor Carter attending as substitute for councillor Robinson. We've also got apologies from Linda Wild, who's the independent member. Thank you, Chair.
Right. So firstly, can I ask those who were here to accept that the minutes are a correct record? Thank you. And secondly, are there any matters arising from those minutes that are not going to be covered on today's agenda?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there were a few items that were raised in June's meeting. One from councillor Carter, who requests further information relating to specific grants that had been previously provided to committee in an internal audit update report. They were provided after the meeting. Councillor Bethel asked whether there be consideration for dog ownership within the antisocial behaviour audit, and that will be considered as part of that piece of work. Councillor Dawson requested an assurance report regarding the management of PFI contracts as they come to an end. And we've spoken to colleagues within the procurement and commercial services who propose that that report will be brought to committee in March 2026. And Linda requested information regarding the fraud and corruption policies and procedures that we have in place, and they were provided to all members after the committee on June, sorry, thank you.
Right, assuming there are no more matters arising, we'll move on to agenda item eight, the annual assurance procurement policies and practices 2425. So who am I handing over to? I'd like to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, Kieran Denner, Head of Procurement and Commercial Services. So this is the annual report with regard to the council's procurement function and arrangements.
Could I ask you to move the microphone a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
Yeah, is that okay? Good, thanks. Yeah, so sorry, Kieran Denner, Head of Procurement and Commercial Services. This is the annual report regarding the council's procurement function and arrangement. It follows the same format as reports previously provided to the committee. So hopefully the approach that we've taken to reporting should be familiar to you. Detail is contained in Appendix A to the report, but there's a few points that I just wanted to take the opportunity to highlight, if that's okay. The Procurement Act 2023 became operative in February 2025. So a significant amount of work has been required to amend processes and train staff to make sure that we were prepared for that. We've also reviewed and amended the contract procedure rules. We reported to committee last October about what we anticipated those amendments might look like. So those changes are now in place in order to ensure that the contract procedure rules comply with the requirements of the new Procurement Act. And also, we wanted to make the CPRs more flexible and a bit more user-friendly as well for officers. Internal Audit has reviewed the changes that we've made to ensure compliance with the Procurement Act, and they've concluded that the council has put in place satisfactory arrangements to review and understand the requirements of the Procurement Act and put in place arrangements to ensure the council's procurements are compliant with those requirements. But we will keep on monitoring and ensuring that we're aware of any developments that might arise and any implications of the new act as they may crop up. We've done a lot of work as well over the last 12 months with regard to contract management best practice and looking at the whole life cycle of a contract. So this has included launching our Contract Management Framework, which provides for tearing of contracts and proportionate guidance and training for contract managers. We've established a contract management community of about 400 offices across the council to share best practice. We've commenced quarterly contract management assurance reports. So these are scorecards that are completed by contract managers across the council and that are reported to the Contract Management Assurance Board, which is part of the Financial Challenge Group. We also undertake deep dives into contracts as well, where we think that's appropriate. And in 2425, that helps us to achieve savings of around about a million pounds from those specific deep dives. Couple of other points just to raise quickly, if that's okay. We've procured a new system to support with our procurement activity, which also helps us with regard to contract management as well. It acts as a repository of documentation and helps reporting with regard to contract management throughout the whole life of a contract. That's anticipated to go live at the beginning of October. We've really progressed the actions that are set out in section five of Appendix A, which is the Source to Contract Action Plan. That was developed alongside colleagues from the LGA about four or five years ago. The one thing that's still outstanding and really requires a bit more work to complete is with regard to the procurement strategy. The current procurement strategy runs from 2019 to 2024. We have started some development with regard to the procurement strategy, but there's a couple of things that have meant that we've been, I suppose, a little bit behind on that. The first is waiting for the new Procurement Act to become operative in February 2025. That was postponed from October 2024. And the other thing is the review that's, I think, just been finalised with regard to the Best City Ambition and also the Organizational Design Plan. We wanted to make sure that the procurement strategy responded to both of those documents before we updated it. So we're currently in a process of consultation. We're benchmarking against other local authorities. We're working with the Local Government Association as well to get that procurement strategy updated. And we're anticipating that we'll be in a position to present that to Executive Board before the end of the calendar year in order to get that approved. What I've included at section four, sorry, pardon me, section five as well of Appendix A, some information to show you progress against key aspects of the procurement strategy from 2019 through to 2024/25. So I'd be happy to take any particular questions on that. I think we've performed fairly well across them all. The one point that I'd like to flag up, and I think there's been a separate question about from one of the members who was unable to attend today, was about on-contract spend. And the figure for the year 2425 has dropped a little bit from previous years. I suppose there's a few things to flag up. When we're talking about on-contract spend, we use that terminology just because it's been the terminology that we've used for a few years now. But what we're really talking about is contracts and spend that is compliant with the council's contract procedure rules. In terms of the sector benchmark, 90% is good for compliance spend. So we're still above that benchmark of good. We anticipated as part of the Source to Contract Action Plan that we've put together working with colleagues at the LGA, that the figure might drop off as we focus more attention to adding value from our procurement activity rather than looking at compliance and governance. So that's, you know, there was some drop-off that was to be expected. I think in terms of the figures that are presented today with regard to 2425, I would also note that there's a lot of work, a lot of manual data cleansing that goes into reviewing data that's been input by colleagues across the council with regard to spend. Normally, we report it around about October, November each year. So we've not got through that process of data cleansing yet with regard to compliance spend. I have had a look at some of the bigger areas of what have been put down as non-compliance spend. And there are some areas where I think it's been wrongly categorised as non-compliance spend. And there's also some areas where it is actually non-compliance spend because it's not in accordance with the CPRs in that the contract hasn't been registered on our procurement system. But that's easily correctable. So I think that figure that's currently sort of 91, 92% will probably increase once we've gone through that data cleansing exercise to around about 94 and 95%. So it's not quite as bad as it might first appear. It's worth also noting that in the context of compliance, the numbers of waivers have reduced very significantly over the last few years. So that's permitted waivers of CPRs. What that means, though, is that there's more non-compliance spend that's appearing because we're not permitting waivers anymore. So if somebody doesn't, previously, somebody was able to say, we want to waive CPRs and get that signed off. Now, we can't waive CPRs. So any non-compliance with CPRs is recorded as non-compliance spend. So that's also going to have an impact on the figures. But overall, we've not had any procurement challenge, so that should give some assurance as well that the processes that we go through with regard to putting contracts in place are fit for purpose and are working. And as I say, we are still above that good sector benchmark of 90%.
Questions?
Thank you, Chair. You've partially addressed what my first question was. But given the fact that procurement and the cost of procuring all the things that we do is central to the budget and central to, indeed, all parties' amendments at council, how confident are you that you will have the new five-year strategy in front of the Exec Board by the end of the calendar year? In particular, how confident are you that the input from other departments, which you've highlighted yourself, is going to be ready and will have been, even more importantly, checked out to be accurate?
So we've already started work with regard to that consultation process with the services. And we've mapped out a programme that takes us through to the end of the year. I think, as I say, we're a little bit behind in waiting for the outcomes of those, the Best City Ambition and the Organizational Design Review. But I think we still are confident that we'll make it there by the end of the year. We've undertaken a self-analysis of progress that works with documentation provided by the Local Government Association. So that is already done. So we know where we are and we know where we need to improve on. So if you ask me, I think probably 90, 95% confident that we will get there by the end of the year. And we have included, as I say, we have started those consultations with colleagues.
Is there a follow-up councillor Carter? Councillor Layton?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've just got a couple of questions. One's actually about the system change, which is coming in in October. I mean, I've got a bit of background in procurement systems, so I'm quite interested in what were you using before and what you're using now. And I'm assuming the reason why you're moving is the previous system wasn't fit for purpose. So I'm keen to understand a little bit about how much you spent on that system and how you expect to get more benefit out of using it. I should imagine it's pretty critical for implementing the new strategy. And then I do have another question as well about whether the new system, from a source-to-contract perspective, will not just deliver benefits in terms of initial spend savings, but actually the value for money piece is really important in terms of following through and ensuring that perhaps service-level agreements are adhered to, that later down the line, that actually each department is really realising those benefits? How is that tracked and is that tracked in the system as well?
Thank you. So the current system that we're using is a system that was procured on a regional basis. There's about, I think, about 30 local authorities originally that collectively procured our current system. Essentially, all it does at the moment is supports us through the advertising and the tendering of contracts. So it's quite limited in what it does. We've worked hard over the last couple of years to look at processes within the council to try and improve contract management and take that whole, the view of the whole life of our contracts. But what I've personally found very difficult is being able to get access to, in some cases, contract documents, but also any information about how the contractor's operated across its life. You're having to get in touch with contract managers who, you know, in some instances are no longer with the council and the contracts have perhaps been passed on, perhaps not been passed on. Information stored sort of locally and on people's, in people's emails and on their hard drives. What the new system does is allows us to, A, tender the contracts, as we're currently doing, B, make sure that we're compliant with regard to reporting and providing notices as we're required to do under the new Procurement Act. And C, it also acts as a contract management tool as well. So we can retain, as a repository, we can retain all the contract documents and we can include regular updates with regard to supplier engagement, any issues with regard to performance, so that we can access that information corporately and we don't have to go contacting individuals who are managing the contracts to ask them to dig out information from their emails or local systems. So really, that should help. It was, we had, I don't know whether the committee will recall, we reported last year about Ernst &amp; Young doing a piece of work with us to review contracts. And it was an issue that they faced as well when they were working with us to try and get access to contract documents. It wasn't great. And so we're anticipating that this system will give us that immediate access. And then that couples with what I was talking about before with regard to the quarterly reporting across all of our contracts. That will be also input into the system and will be available for us to access. So in terms of the overall value, it should prove its worth.
Any follow-up councillor Layton? Victoria?
Thank you. Can I just add to that? There was a report that went to Executive Board on the 16th of July around the core business transformation, because this is one of the modules within that. And that report does go into some detail about the approach, the timeline, what the benefits are, the governance arrangements, et cetera. So it'd be definitely worth just a quick read of that one as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask as well, do you have a backlog? Do you have a backlog? Yeah, of, I guess, I don't know, people asking for you, you know, contracts to be run through the new procurement system. I'm just thinking, you know, procurement was, it was clear to me that in terms of meeting the budget challenges, improved procurement practices are going to help us get there. I just wondered if you have a backlog that you're working through?
Yeah, so in terms of the new system, we've got user acceptance testing throughout August. And then there's an initial trial period when the system will be operating in September. And during that period, all the current contracts and all the current information that we've got with regard to past procurements, albeit that it's limited information that we've got, will be transferred across to the new system. And then from the full go-live in October, new contracts will be going on there. As part of, as Victoria was talking about, with regard to the core business transformation programme, we've also got a small team, three individuals who are new resource, who will be able to monitor the contracts on the system and make sure that the information's being updated. Typically, we have a cycle of between three and five years of contracts. So there will be some contracts where we probably won't chase up and make sure that information is being put on with regard to contract performance and things like that, because they'll be coming up to expire in the next 12, 18 months, something like that. So we will prioritise those longer-term contracts and higher-value contracts to make sure that all the information with regard to performance that we're expecting of our new contracts is also going on there with regard to these, as I say, higher-value or longer-term contracts that will have been in place prior to the new system going live.
You didn't actually answer the question, sorry.
So as things stand, we've got all, I couldn't sort of hand on heart say all of our contracts will be on the current, are on the current system. There will be contracts that have been put in place across the council that should be on the system and aren't on the system. And I was talking earlier about non-compliance. That certainly is the case for last year. So we're aware of instances of non-compliance. We do chase those down and try and make sure that the information is on the system. So I think we're more or less up to date at the moment, albeit, as I say, that the information is limited in the sense that it's the information up to the end of the tender process and doesn't contain any information beyond that. So there will be, when we get the new system, I guess that effectively there will be a backlog because we will want to get some of that information onto the system for those higher-value, longer-term contracts. But as things stand, I'd say, no, we don't have a backlog.
You know, and I thought only politicians couldn't give a yes/no answer. Councillor Hartbrook?
Thank you. Page 39, Table 5.7, Value for Money. It breaks down expenditure into open to competition and uninfluencible. And says that the uninfluencible spend has sort of doubled in the last sort of three or four years. Can you just explain what is classed as uninfluencible versus open to competition? And the rationale of what's happened for that expenditure to double while the open to competition spend has actually dropped slightly?
Yeah, so there's a few different headings that would class as uninfluencible spend. And I can provide information to the committee following this meeting with a bit more detail about that if that's helpful. But the kind of things we're talking about is spend from schools, for example, that comes through the council's budget that we're not able to influence as a procurement service. There's also, in terms of, for example, social care, where you've got service user choice. It's up to the individual service user how they spend the allocation with regard to to provide for their particular social care needs. And we're not able to influence how they spend that. So that's classed as uninfluencible spend as well. But I can get you more detail following from this meeting as to the, all the different sort of subheadings that we've got as uninfluencible spend and the particular values that are ascribed to those as well.
Thank you. I think that is something, that was an excellent question. I think that's something we'd all like to know. So if you could get that over, please. Hart, can I ask?
So where there is uninfluencible spend, which is basically effectively acting as like a pass-through conduit for the funds, is what you're saying, is there any work that's done to benchmark to say, you know, because obviously it's money that's coming through our hands to make sure that where that's going to is delivering good value for money? Because obviously, although there is a degree of latitude of freedom in terms of choice of provider, is there not, is there any mechanism to say, well, actually, that's fine, but the one you've chosen is twice what we think is the going rate for that level of service? Is any benchmarking done in that capacity?
So with regard to, for example, school spend, they still have to comply with contract procedure rules that are specific for schools. And in the context of social care and commissioning, commissioners are still involved and obviously sort of social workers are as well. In terms of myself and my service, we don't directly get involved, but other colleagues across the council will be involved and will be supporting.
Councillor Carter?
Let's just on to touch on that last point. Either there's an easy answer to why uninfluencible expenditure has doubled since 2021, whilst open to competition has roughly remained the same. There's either an easy answer, or it's very worrying. And the sooner we get that information, the better. If you move to the next paragraph on governance, you've made great play on being over 90%. But the direction of travel is backwards, isn't it? It's backwards from 97.22% in 2021 to 91.69% now. So it may be over 90%, but the direction of travel is backwards. So that concerns me as well. Is there an explanation for that?
Yes, in terms of the, in terms of the point that you're making about on-contract spend, which is, as I mentioned earlier, what we're really talking about there is spend that is compliant with CPRs. spend that is compliant with CPRs. In, I think it was 2020, it might have been 2021, we undertook a procurement peer review that was facilitated by the local government association, and they were saying, you know, 90% is really the benchmark you should be aiming for. You're putting a lot of resource into ensuring that spend is compliant in accordance with your CPRs. But where we think you would get better value as an authority is looking at things like contract management to ensure that we're getting value from our contracts and delivering things like social value, you know, getting extra value from the contracts that we're delivering for our communities. So we have moved some resource away from focusing on compliance. It does take a lot of resource to chase down each and every contract to double, double check that it is compliant with our CPRs and to make sure that where, for example, information hasn't been recorded on our system properly, that services are putting the information on the system. So we always anticipated that there would be a bit of a decline. So when we were talking about those sort of figures over the last two years where it's sort of dropping from 97 down to 96, that was anticipated. The drop down to 90, well, just short of 92% for 2024, 25, I was a bit worried when I saw that myself. I have taken a look at those figures, those headlines, some of the big key areas that have been categorised as non-compliance spend. I think some of them have been categorised incorrectly as non-compliance spend, and as I was saying earlier, some of the instances as well have been where are circumstances that are remediable, so we can get information put on the system to make sure that it is then compliant in accordance with the CPRs. So they've been procured fine, there's not a concern about that at all, it's just that the information then hasn't been put on our system. So that's easily capable of remedy, it just takes a little bit of time. We haven't got there yet. As I say, we normally report around about October, November time, so we're able to correct these things. And it does take quite a bit of, as I say, resource and man hours to go through and cleanse the data that has been put on the system and that we've gathered from services.
Councillor Carter, would you like to come back? In which case I'll come back, if you don't mind, but I'll let Victoria speak first.
Sorry, thank you. I'd just add to that, that it was a conscious decision that we wanted to move the resource on to contract management so that we attained value for money, and it was something that we weren't as strong on. And that was part of the LGA review recommendation. But as Kieran said, once the data's been cleansed, then it should give a better outcome. On the uninfluential spend, I think there is a drive towards direct payments, especially in adult social care, et cetera. So you would see a move to more uninfluential spend, which would account for some of that change. What I would also say is that the directorates spend a lot of time benchmarking to ensure that we do achieve value for money in that spend, although it's not undertaken by Kieran's team in procurement. Okay, thank you.
I think my comment on the back of that is, you've said on several occasions, the amount of time it takes to actually cleanse the data and make sure that things are accurate. What's needed so you don't have to do that? Is it better training of the people who are doing the inputting? Is it different processes? What would actually help you be able to do your job and not have to correct other people's mistakes?
So part of the, part of the justification for the new system is that we've just procured and should be in place from October is that it should be more accessible, should be more straightforward. As I mentioned earlier, we've also reviewed the CPRs to try and make them a bit more user friendly and straightforward for colleagues in services to understand. So that should help them to make sure that they are more compliant and also recording spenders as compliant properly. So I think we've invested over the last 12 months, that resource, and with the new system being in place, that should help further. So I would expect that compliance to increase. As part of the investment in the source to contract system, I think I mentioned earlier, we've also got a small team of three staff who are able to monitor the system as well. So they should be able to focus on making sure that the data and the information on there is correct, so that should improve compliance. But at the same hand, picking up sort of Victoria's point about making sure that we're adding value and making sure that we're getting full value for money from the contracts that we've got in place. So I think we've put the resource in, I think we're probably there now, but this is looking back sort of to the previous financial year. So I think from this year and moving forward, I'd expect that figure to improve.
Right, has anybody else got any questions? I just have one thing to add, and I should have brought it up under the minutes, and that's, a question was asked, and you don't have to answer because it is just me informing the board. PFI contracts, and we asked whether a report could be received by the committee regarding the contract management process when these contracts expire. The procurement and commercial services team have advised that this is currently in progress with one PFI contract, and a report will be presented and it's scheduled for March 2026. With the contract management lessons learnt from this process. So there is a gap between this one coming up and the next tranche, so we've got time to receive that report in March and go through it in more detail. Right, if we've no other matters.
Just on your point, I was reading some statistics about PFI and the cost to the taxpayer and the local taxpayer. It is staggering, staggeringly high. I don't think we get as much information as we should about the total cost of the PFI schemes in this city over the years that it's been running. The cost is phenomenal.
Well, it's coming back March 26, so no doubt we'll be able to do that in more detail at that time. So what have we got? We have got some things, some recommendations. So recommendation A, consider and note the assurances provided in the report from the review assessment and ongoing monitoring carried out. Can we agree that? Yep. And B, note that the head of procurement and commercial services has reached the opinion that procurement policies and practices are up to date, fit for purpose and effectively communicated. Yep. And note that the council's procurement strategy is currently the subject of review and consultation with the intention of developing a new five year strategy for approval by executive board later in the year. Does councillor Carter comment on that? Right, that's great, thank you very much.
So yeah, this is our annual report and opinion for the year 2024/25. So this is a statutory report that I am required to deliver in my role as the chief audit executive. Now, that is a title that is attributable under the public sector internal audit standards. Worthwhile pointing out that the work that has been completed, that goes into this report, has been completed in line with those public sector internal audit standards. They have now been replaced by the global internal audit standards that came into effect from the 1st of April. But this is, this report is a culmination of the work undertaken over the course of the year. So in essence, it's largely information that the committee has already seen and reviewed through the update reports that we've provided through the course of this year. So appendix A includes our declaration of independence and objectivity, and again, in accordance with the public sector internal audit standards at section two. Then the key part in section three is around the opinion itself and the basis of assurance upon which that is built. So as you can see, I've given a satisfactory opinion for the year on governance, risk management and control arrangements. Now, that is based upon the breadth of and outcomes of the audit work that we've delivered. So you can see across the coverage in line with the assurance themes at 4.5 and risks at 4.6, the breadth of coverage further brought out in appendix C. We do draw upon other sources of assurance in addition to our own work, and you can see at 4.7, where there are potential gaps in our own work, we've given a summary of the sources of assurance that satisfy us in those areas. Our audit work itself is built upon what you would class as traditional methods of auditing, further reliance on data analytics, advisory work that we provide to get involved in projects on the go and provide advice on change as it happens, and a range of insights drawn from our counter fraud and corruption work as well. So across those areas, we do identify risks and areas for improvement, but the key point to note is that in the context of the overall opinion, they're not considered to be significant enough to impair that overall opinion. A further source of assurance which we rely upon is the timely implementation of audit actions, and we've seen noticeable improvement in this through our recommendation tracking activity, which was last reported to the committee in June and is further reaffirmed in this report. So that satisfactory opinion, just to clarify around that, the precedent across local government when given an opinion is that there's not a sliding scale there where you would move, for example, from satisfactory to good to excellent. It is simply the fact that it is either satisfactory and we are able to give that opinion, or for a reason, i.e. around the completeness of our work or the materiality of risk identified, it would then be considered unsatisfactory. So just to clarify that point, that is why it is deemed to be satisfactory. Appendix B runs through the assurance around the adequate resourcing of our service and the quality of the work undertaken, and I'll come back to that feedback at the end. Appendix C offers a summary of the work undertaken to support the opinion, so the work across each directorate and service area that we've completed, a summary of the opinions where we've given them, and the key findings and outcomes where we've not necessarily given an opinion on that. As I say, that is a summary of work that's already been to committee through the update reports largely. Appendix D includes our internal audit strategy, which is something we put together alongside the introduction of the global internal audit standards. So the strategy sets out our purpose and vision. We're open with the committee in there around our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and we set out what we plan to do to move towards optimal level, which is based largely around further development and innovation with regard to our use of data and technology, and also the raising of our profile, which I'm already able to evidence through our increased engagement at corporate leadership team and directorate leadership teams, and also tallies in with some of the feedback that we've received. Now, the charter, appendix E reaffirms our purpose and position in the authority and is a document, again, that we're required to set out in line with the standards, and we're sharing that with the committee in the interests of transparency there. So just circling back to the feedback in appendix B, one of the main measures of this is that we issue a customer satisfaction questionnaire to each audit client on completion of each audit. The feedback level that we've had is roughly similar to last year at 64%, and the feedback that we've had on completion of each audit, I feel, is a really good reflection of the work of the team. The wider feedback that we've received from senior management is also, I believe, an excellent reflection of the value that we've added. It does reaffirm the need to boost our profile, which is something, as I say, that we are already working on. But with regard to that feedback, I do think it's also important for me to just highlight a thank you to the team for the work that they've undertaken throughout this year, which has led to this opinion. A lot of the work that we undertake while that is ongoing is work that we can't necessarily shout about and sometimes can't even talk about to other departments. The outcomes of our work tend to be a push and an encouragement to services for improvement, and it's vital, I always see it as vital, that we don't try and impinge on the credit for the services that's due there, for what they're doing there and the way that those services are delivered. So sometimes it can feel as an auditor that the thanks don't always come to us, which I do understand, but I think in delivering this opinion, it's important that I recognise the work that the whole team has undertaken to deliver that breadth of coverage. So a thank you to the whole team there, and we're excited about the future in line with the strategy that's presented. So apologies for people who are tired of my voice already, but we have received some questions from the independent member who sends her apologies. So in the interest of transparency, I'm just going to run through what those questions were and the headline responses to that. So page 55, Linda has asked about, around assurance around climate and transportation on the back of the fact that our assurance there that's recorded is largely around the certification of grant work. So can we provide a bit of extra information on how we get the assurance in that area? Now, this was something that we did provide to the committee in the last update report in June around that area, just to highlight a bit more around that gap, if you like, in noticeable coverage in our work. Worth highlighting that as a pillar of the best city ambition, there are already some substantial oversight arrangements that are in place to monitor progress in that area. So in addition to the annual reporting through executive board, the council does have a separate climate emergency and advisory committee in place that consider and make recommendations regarding climate change and sustainability. That's not to say that there isn't a space for independent assurance in that area, and it is something that we will continue to consider in our risk assessment. It may be something that we reaffirm a push on throughout consideration in the scope of each audit, but are mindful of how many asks we have in that area. And as you can see in our proposed key performance indicator, the big push at the moment is around our consideration of data analytics in those areas, but it is something that I will consider there.
Could I, could I just come in at that point? As Linda isn't here, does any member of the committee have a, almost like a supplementary to what Linda's asked about climate and transport? Right, move on.
Within that question, Linda has also asked around whether we have plans to cover any of the areas where there hasn't necessarily been coverage recorded in the last year. The answer to that is absolutely, it does bump it up the priority in accordance with our risk assessment. However, we do take into fact, into account the strength of other assurances in there within that risk assessment. So it isn't necessarily the case that every area will be something that we cover in the next year, but it does put it up the list of priority if we haven't had coverage more recently there. The next question from Linda was around page 63 that references a review of the whistleblowing policy, whether any changes have been made and what they are. So the main changes, to summarise, are around scope and definitions of the policy, to bring that tightly in accordance with public interest disclosure legislation. We've also proposed some alterations around reporting lines of concerns, and important to note there that we took this to CLT, corporate leadership team, last week, and this is an area that is still under discussion around exactly the direction that that policy is going to move in, so it's not quite ready for finalisation yet. We're still considering how we monitor and oversee some of the concerns outside of the fraud and corruption sphere there. There is also some further clarity about reporting of whistleblowing concerns to schools, which we've tightened up with cross reference to the schools whistleblowing policy.
Right, same question. Linda's not here, anybody would like to follow up on any of those points? Councillor Carter.
Not sure this is in order, so tell me if it's not. So how many counter fraud investigations are currently running into departments in Leeds City Council? I don't want the names of the departments, I'm just asking how many there are in total.
I don't have the figure to hand, councillor Carter. It's something that we did report in the counter fraud update report that came to committee in June. In the interest of being absolutely accurate in that, I'm happy to provide that in response after the meeting. Broadly, I think the message was in the last meeting that the number of referrals we've received is fairly steady, there hasn't necessarily been an increase, but we do have some more complex and impactful concerns that we're investigating within that, but I'll come back with the exact figure for you after the meeting.
Sorry, anything else from Linda?
There are a couple more questions. So Linda has asked around page 101, if there is space for us to perhaps introduce a key performance indicator that monitors overall delivery of the plan by quarter that we provide to committee. Now, we are transparent around this in each update report that we provide, so in each update report, there is a graph that will say what we plan to do that we set out from the previous update versus what we have delivered each time, similar, if you like, to a KPI, but without stringently measuring the percentage of that. The reason that we don't monitor that as a percentage at this stage is because the plan is inherently flexible in nature, and reprioritisation of the work we do is something that I would tend to consider as a strength rather than a weakness. So I'm keen to make sure that a performance indicator wouldn't detract from the need for that reprioritisation. for that reprioritisation. We can see in the strategy itself that we have had a further push on our performance monitoring overall and I think that's largely geared towards the timeliness of the completion of our work, which itself will support the throughput of work from each quarter. But that's the reason why we haven't introduced a KPI in that area at the moment. It is something that we will consider and keep on the table for consideration. There's one more question for the independent member, but rather like the last ones, I'll pause and see if there's anything anybody wants to add on there. So to continue with the last one, the question was, can we look at merging the Quality Assurance Improvement Programme that's on page 74 with the Continuous Improvement Action Plan that is told within the strategy on page 103? There's a straightforward answer to that, which is yes. The reason it's set out in the way that it is, is that the Quality Assurance Improvement Programme shows a culmination of those improvement activities which we presented over the course of this year in the previous update reports. The strategy is forward looking from this point. Moving forward, we will be merging the two. So that's the end of those particular questions.
Right, the floor's open. Any more questions from members? Councillor Leighton.
I mean, it is, it is related to the budget and risk because I, I should imagine in your risk register that budget overspend was in there as probably one of the, the highest risks and that risk looks like it's materialising particularly in children and families in terms of significant overspend there. So I guess my question is, risks do materialise, but is there anything else that you should have done, reflections on that process in thinking about more mitigations maybe than you did?
As you say, risks sometimes do materialise and it is quite an iterative process in those areas. We do keep an eye on that through the various budget review type groups that exist whereby savings plans and action plans are continually drawn up and subject to monitoring. So within that area, there is always the opportunity to reflect on successes, failures and come back with thoughts and recommendations around what we can learn on that. Sometimes, as you'll appreciate, some of those particular overspends are not necessarily immediately controllable by actions, some of them are demand-led and outside of our control and in some areas, and I think it's clear in those areas, that there will be actions that we take that don't immediately come to fruition and it can take time for those to come through. But it is something that we continue to reflect on in those sort of areas, as you say, is a big risk to the council. I don't know if Victoria, if anything to add around the budget management risk particularly or if that answers that one enough?
Nothing specifically. I think you answered that really well. I think there's a lot of governance around those high-risk areas and we do get internal audit involved right at the beginning, so they're in all those meetings so that they can get the assurance around what we're undertaking, how, how we're reporting that, et cetera. I think with the children's and adults' overspends, it is a risk. We are managing it, but a lot of authorities are having to manage this. It's a national issue and we do report to executive board on a monthly basis, so we're very transparent about what's in there, what we're doing and the issues that are relating to the financial position. It is on the risk register, as you've said, and it's a high risk and we are putting in a number of measures, as I say, that internal audit are involved in. Thank you.
Any more questions? In which case, I've just got one and it's relating to what probably is old news because I note that this is from the first of April 2024, but there's only one high-risk recommendation that hadn't been resolved in that period and it was ICT and governance information. Do we know, has that now been, it's another year down the line, you would, you would suspect that it had.
Just to introduce that one, and again, I think we gave a little more detail on this, I'm conscious not to overload with detail in this particular report, but we did give a bit of extra information on this in the last update report to committee and I think in fairness to Andrew, Chief Officer in that area who is here, this is one where a substantial amount of the work in regard to that recommendation, which was around the management of the cyber security risk, has already been undertaken. So it's not the case that the recommendation has been left in any way, it is simply that there were some further actions required to fully close out that one. So that's the main reason for that.
One suspects with cyber security that you'll never be up to date, there's always somebody trying to bypass and circumvent, so I would suggest that's possibly one that will always be one where you're working on it.
Yeah, exactly that, but what we are doing, it's more around preparedness and bringing new staff into the team. So we've put in place a long-term training plan, in fact, it's going to Fin Challenge today, where we're bringing some apprentices in, we've got two other post-releases, we're trying to build up that cyber team. We're also looking to go to market for a security operations centre where we'll have a, a third party that will help us with the heavy lifting around monitoring. But you're absolutely right, it's, it's, it's there all the time, there's been a number of incidents in the last four weeks. I won't go into it in a public forum, but it's, it's happening all the time.
Right, so short of any more questions, we'll move to the recommendations. I will take it for speed that you've actually read the recommendations. Can we expect, accept those as, that's excellent, thank you very much. So we're moving now to agenda item 10, Grant Thornton's Draft Statement of Accounts 24/25. Mary.
Thank you, Chair. So the report presents the draft statement of accounts for 2024/25, which at this stage in the process is coming to the committee for information. The accounts are currently on public deposit, the deposit period has got about two and a, two and a bit weeks left to run, but so far there have been no public inspection queries or public objections. Grant Thornton's audit is also underway, so we're back on a normal cycle of accounts followed by audit and the intention is that the final audited accounts will come back to the committee at the December meeting and it's at that stage that the committee will be asked to approve them on behalf of the council. Assuming those timescales, we intend to run an informal briefing session for members during November to go into the figures on the accounts in a bit more detail. I did just want to highlight a couple of issues though in the accounts themselves. So the introduction of IFRS 16 this year has had a big impact on some of the figures. So this is a new accounting standard which affects the way in which PFI liabilities and finance lease liabilities are measured and it also means that some leases in which were previously treated as operating leases are now treated as capital transactions with assets and liabilities on the balance sheet. So the overall impact of that has been additional long-term liabilities being recognised of £144 million. That appears in the deferred liabilities row on the balance sheet, but I would stress that this is purely a technical accounting change, it has no impact at all on the amounts that we're actually paying under any of these contracts. And then the other issue I wanted to highlight is the IS19 pensions position. So our funded pensions position for the previous two years has shown a surplus, which was very unusual, that had never happened before. It's now, this year, back to a net nil position. So what's happened, that although the fair value of the assets has increased slightly during the year, it's the fact that the fair, the current value of the liabilities has decreased quite significantly because of the way they're discounted as at the balance sheet date and the actuaries have therefore advised us to apply a higher surplus restriction. So basically, they've advised that we should have a net nil position on the balance sheet. I should stress again that the balance sheet position for pensions is quite volatile and it's measured on a different basis from the triennial review. So this position on the balance sheet, although it shows us a net loss in terms of our net worth on the balance sheet, it has no impact at all on the pensions, pensions contributions that we pay going forward because those will be based on the triennial review, which has a more forward-looking basis. So all you can really draw from, from the balance sheet position is that the pension fund as a whole is still in a reasonably healthy position. That was all I wanted to say in terms of figures, so I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that members have.
There you go, Mary. So no other officers would like to comment, in which case we'll move to the, to the recommendation, which is that members are asked to note the inaudited statement of accounts 24/25, which has been certified by the responsible financial officer. That's good. Right, agenda item 11, interim annual governance statement 24/25. Liz.
Thank you, Chair. So this item presents the council's draft annual governance statement for 24/25. The statement has been written in line with the industry guidance and provides a detailed overview of the council's governance framework, highlighting our commitment to transparency, accountability and continuous improvement. Throughout the past year, we've worked to strengthen our governance arrangements, ensuring that they align with best practice and regulatory requirements. Key achievements in 24/25 include the refresh of our decision-making procedure rules, which will be covered in the next item, and the implementation of key systems such as ITREN and MS, MS Dynamics and the achievement of a balanced budget and the finalisation of our accounts to bring them in line with the government backstop. So as this is the draft annual governance statement, it will remain a living document which is open to review and amendment up until the point that the council's accounts are finalised for the same period, anticipated to be December's committee meeting. We'll continue to review the key components of our governance structure and include significant activities and achievements as well as areas for improvement going forward. The draft annual governance statement is presented to you for consideration and feedback so that we're able to refine the statement prior to finalisation in December. Happy to take any comments or questions. Thank you.
Right, I know you've all read it and you all have digested it. Any recommendations you'd like to make at this point? Excellent, thank you very much, Liz. So we'll move on to agenda item 12, Annual Assurance Statement Decision Making. Liz, over to you again.
Back again. So this item is the presentation of the annual decision-making assurance report for the 24/25 period. The report follows a recognised structure of the cycle of internal control as well as informing members of the refreshed decision-making procedure rules, which were endorsed by full council in May 2024. Members will note that in responding to the refreshed decision-making procedure rules, a suite of training was created and updated on our insight page and made available to all officers via our performance and learning platform in addition to regular communications through our manager comms updates. Our initial review of the impact of the new procedure rules suggests that the rules have had their desired, sorry, have achieved the desired outcome of reducing the perceived bureaucracy and administration in decision-making whilst maintaining our integrity of our accountability and transparency arrangements. The KPI performance illustrates that the overall performance is maintained, suggesting that the new procedure rules have not had a detrimental impact to our performance. Learning has also been taken from this year's responses to the survey of internal control and we'll work on increasing the visibility and communication of the decision-making procedure rules in, throughout the coming year. Again, happy to take any comments or questions on that report. Thank you.
Any comments, any questions? Just one quick one, Liz, from me. The changes are welcome, streamlining. Are there any risks that come with that for the council?
Thank you, Chair. I think the risks were considered when, when the council initially looked at the different alternatives. One of the risks would be a reduction in transparency, but actually I think the report sets out that whilst there is a reduction in the number of decisions that have been published, there is a shift on the increase of those that are published not linked to the financial threshold, which shows that decision-makers are considering that whether there are other reasons as to why a decision should be published, even though it doesn't trigger the financial threshold to publish an administrative decision. So I think that's really strong evidence to show that decision-makers are still considering the transparency needs as to what the decision is and whether the public might be interested in knowing about that decision being made, notwithstanding that it's below the £250,000 threshold. There's been no changes to key decisions and therefore that process is still the same and there's been no changes to non-executive decisions, so that process is still the same for publication.
Absolutely, thank you. Right, assuming there are no other questions, we'll move on to looking at if the committee agrees with the recommendations set out in the report. Consider and note the positive assurances set out in the statement for decision-making arrangements at appendix A to this report. Excellent. Liz, over to you again, the work plan member development programme.
Thank you. Promise this is the final item from me. So this is the presentation of the work plan and members' development plan that we produce and present every committee meeting. Members will note that there's the addition of the PFI assurance report in, for March, as we discussed at the beginning of the meeting.